Good evening. Today is June 11th. It's now 5:30. We're at the Hyde Park Central School District's Board of Education meeting. I have a motion to enter executive session for confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment of a particular person or persons, collective bargaining negotiations, and matter of litigation. Please.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for your patience. I'm sorry we're a little late tonight. May I have a motion to go back to regular session, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We're back in executive session, I mean, in regular section. At this time, we'll have the... Pledge allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As far as I know, there are no modifications to the agenda. I have a motion to accept the agenda as listed.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And that brings us to pride.
I'm Paul Vesial. I'm the assistant principal at, one of the assistant principals at Haviland Middle School. And it's very appropriate tonight that we are presenting pride because I am very proud of our program that we have at Haviland Middle School and also at FDR. It's called the Avid Program. And we have some students tonight from that program who are going to do a way better job than I could ever do explaining the benefits of that program. But I just want to mention one thing before they come up and do a fantastic job in front of everyone, is that yesterday they had an opportunity to present to the elementary school, Ralph R. Smith, an anti-bullying program that they themselves, along with their wonderful teacher, Ms. Nieman, who has taken on this first-year Avid class at HMS. They did a wonderful job presenting anti-bullying program to the Ralph R. Smith students. It was a program in which they had four stations that designed a game, a play, and two other activities in which we spin wheels and answer questions. And it totally engaged the students, and it taught them a valuable lesson. But beyond the valuable lesson of anti-bullying, it really, I was impressed by the skills that these young people have attained through this program, to be able to be so articulate, and so kind, and gentle, and explain themselves, and take the time to, even when we came back, they reflected upon their practice, what went well and what didn't go well. It's incredible. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you a few of our students. I want to let them introduce themselves from our Avid program at Haviland Middle
Good evening, everybody. We are three of the lucky students from Haviland Middle School that were selected into the Avid Program last year. And without further ado...
This year, Avid Program had come to eighth-grade class at Haviland Middle School. We are just three of the 16 determined students that were selected to be in this program. The experience exposed us to the process of completing and application, obtaining references, and interviewing to be a part of something very special.
Advancement via individual determination has been shortened to the acronym AVID. It was created 35 years ago by one woman, Mary Kathleen Swanson, at the Claremont High School in San Diego, California. Ms. Swanson saw potential in her students. We too have been selected because our teachers saw potential in us.
In the beginning of this year, we met our peers and promptly started problem solving. We worked through complicated brain teasers that required us to work collaboratively. Together, we found the answers and helped our peers who struggled to understand. We now do this through tutorials. Tutorials are where a problem is presented by a student who struggles in an academic area, but with help, through questions from their peers, are able to understand the topic.
While on the topic of problem solving, WICER is an extremely vital part of our program. W, writing is essential to figuring out our problems because we can express our ideas.
I, inquiry, allows us to ask the right questions.
C, collaboration is how we work together to solve many of our problems. The more, the better, right? O stands for organization. We follow the slogan "One binder, one world," in which we keep everything from all of our classes in a single binder in an organized fashion.
And finally, R, reading. In class, we learned how to use active reading strategies. WICER taught us skills for our future. Throughout the school year, we have taken several field trips and recently worked on many projects. As Mr. Shaw said, this week alone, we presentated, we presented, I'm sorry, to a group of third graders with our anti-bullying presentations.
Also, we raised money for a local charity called Kickin' Back. We raised $370, which exceeded our expectations of $200. We choose this project because they support education in remote areas of the world. This time, we would like to read a poem that our class created. We believe this poem embraces who we are.
We are Avid.
We wonder how AVID will impact our future. We hear the encouragement of our classmates. We see a great future in the time ahead of us. We are dedicated to overcome our weaknesses in education. We pretend to be doctors, YouTubers, entertainers, veterinarians, culinary chefs, scientists, real estate agents, mechanics, and engineers. We feel privileged to be part of the AVID program.
We influence the mind of our fellow peers in a positive way. We worry about our future generations' education. We cry when we are not successful. We are determined. We understand that in order to succeed, we must believe in our academic ability.
We possess creative and inspirational ideas. We dream of going to the college of our choice. We try to be successful in our life, in our goals that we set. We hope to achieve those goals that we set. We believe in advancement via individual determination.
We are AVID.
Thanks. Before you sit down, would you introduce yourselves? We didn't, I didn't catch your name, so...
I'm Anthony.
My name is Michael.
My name is James.
Thanks.
Very nice. Thanks. And if the students do have a ride, we don't expect you to stay. We know you have an early morning, so don't feel you need to stay for sure. That's, I don't know which one to use. And thank you. That was excellent. We're really pleased to see the AVID program growing, and students who are really proud to be in it, so thank you. Just a couple of other things that happened this week. For the first time in a long time, concert in the parks actually happened in the park. And so, that's good news. Hopefully, that's starting a new trend. Each year, we have, North Park Elementary School does Operation Healthy North Park. And that's where everybody in the school is encouraged to exercise every day for the month of May. But they extend that throughout the district, and I know district office employees participate. I certainly participate and send my co-op cars in on a weekly basis. So, the net result was higher than they've ever had in the past. They received 5,242 co-op cars. Each car represents like 20 minutes of exercise or whatever each day. And it resulted in the 5,200 cars represented 104,840 minutes of exercise. So, congratulations. We also had the athletic award banquet on June 1st. Every year, it's an exceptional event. This year was no different. We, we, me, I just say hello. But Amy's here tonight. Between Janet Duffy, Pat Mosher, and Amy McCardle-Rausenberger, it's an exceptional night. The speaker this year was Duke...
Peyton.
Peyton. A graduate and a real success story. And he spoke very much from the heart. He says he's not a public speaker, and you know, that's definitely not his line of work. But what a humble, yet accomplished man who overcame a lot of hurdles and is in a very successful position right now, working for...
NBA.
NBA. The National Baseball Association. Basketball. Sorry. I knew that. I actually did know that.
Typical gymnast.
So, but it was an excellent night. And I think that was all I had.
It was a shadow play at Netherwood on Monday. That was kind of interesting. The theme was your family's history, where did you come from? And the kids shared stories about their families. It was kind of, kind of interesting. And it was, that was two classes, or was it just the one?
Two, I think.
I think it was two classes.
Yeah.
That was... Anybody else? Anything else? Okay. So, you have anything else for superintendent's report?
We touched on the National Honor Society.
No.
I did get an opportunity to attend the National Honor Society induction of new members and recognition of the graduating class. And as usual, it was a very well-run ceremony, and the, for the first time I can remember at least, when the seniors, the seniors actually took the podium at the end, which they've done in the past, and gave us a brief glimpse into where their future was going. This is the first time where we didn't hear, we heard undecided about career choices as far as going to college, but undecided as to what I'm going to be studying. But it's the first time I can remember, and I've been there for at least close to 15, 20 years attending these, where every student had already identified a college that they're going to. There were some Dutchess community colleges, but everyone was, every one of the top 20 were going to, of the seniors was going to a college. So, that's an outstanding accomplishment. And it was highlighted by the fact, one of the, one of the members of the National Honor Society is going on a full scholarship...
Wellesley.
Wesleyan.
Wellesley.
Welles, Welles, I thought it was Wesleyan.
Was it Wellesleyan? Okay.
But this boy applied for...
There's a well in there somewhere.
Yeah. Applied for a scholarship in a new program where this, this group has brought together 39 of the outstanding colleges in the United States, and each one of them is offering full scholarships. And what they do is they go through the applications. He was one of 8% of the applicants who was awarded a scholarship when Wesleyan matched up what they could offer to what he wanted. And the only qualification unique to that college application was that he would be a first-time college student from his family. And I thought that was fantastic. You know, the programs like that exist, they've been identified, he had the opportunity to apply, and was successful to go, to go forth at that kind of a step forward from the, from FDR. So, that was really something special, I thought.
All right. Thank you, Dan. That moves us to the master facilities plan update. Elliot?
We have Elliot and a couple of community members.
And some community members, and...
Thanks, Todd. Good evening, everybody. Just want to introduce our panel this, tonight, for the master facility plan. This is a wonderful group of community administrators, board members, and anybody that wishes to attend, and they do some great things. So, I'd like to honor the entire group this evening, but certainly want to introduce certainly Elliot Garcia, our Director of Facilities and Operations, who helps to work on, together with the administrative group to make this group happen. Barbara Sweet, who is a community member and an active member for many, many years, as long as I've been here, for just about 11 years. She's been a great part of the group. Roger Gill is a little bit of a newer member, but has come every single, every single meeting. And we appreciate his guidance and his input. And then we have John Vanderly, who has also been an active member for many, many years. So, with that said, I'm going to turn it over to John Vanderly. Actually, it's Barbara Sweet.
Ladies first.
Okay. Thank you very much. We've, we want to give you a little run-through of what the master facilities plan is. It consists of two parts. There's the district renovation and improvement plan, which you see on the left. That's done in-house by facilities and operations people. They're short-term projects. What by short-term, I'm not exactly sure what the timeframe is. But the projects are tracked in a separate listing, okay? And they are in, used in the annual report to help plan and help plan for the budget. The capital plan is something altogether different. That's done every five years, okay? And it's used for long-term capital projects. If you know, I think everyone knows what capital projects are. These are generally high-cost projects requiring architectural review and state education department approval and other high-cost evaluation-type things. These projects and expenses are offset by state aid. All of these projects must be, must be approved by voters. Okay? That's one of the two differences. So, the facilities plan consists of two parts. The district renovation and improvement plan in-house, and the capital plan done every five years. And from there, Roger?
No.
Or John.
Who's on first? Yeah. Eventually, I get up here. Okay. So, I'll talk a little bit more about how we get to the capital plan. My own take is taking care of the district facilities is much like taking care of your own home. You want everything in good repair, where things work, where they are adequate to your needs, and that everything meets codes. But you also find over time that was, that what was great yesterday is no longer efficient, useful, or practical. And those items may call for wholesale upgrades. So, it's pretty much the same in our school districts. Our buildings are monitored and inspected by the facilities and operations staff. Repairs are noted, and the need for improvements are identified. Building administrators and staff members also take note of these items. They identify needed projects, and then review all projects with the facilities and operations staff. The project team, that consists of the district administrators, architects, and engineers, they review these projects and incorporate them into the building condition survey, which is a separate report mandated by the state every five years. This eventually results in a master facilities plan, which will contain both district renovation and improvement plan items, the drip, as we call it for short, as well as capital items. And as Barbara Sweet pointed out, the facilities and operations staff can do many drip items, and these small projects are handled as a separate budgetary item. So, throughout the year, the field and operations directors, James Hubel and Elliot Garcia, meet with the building principals to review and update the drip portion of the master facilities plan. The facilities steering forum gets an opportunity to review the new master facilities plan and makes recommendations for the capital portion of the document. Then this resulting new master facilities plan is then presented to you people, the Board of Ed, for review in open session. And then we'll see what happens after that. And any questions?
Currently, there are several projects being worked on or have been completed. The sign project has been an ongoing project, which was delayed because of agency approvals that were needed. All approvals have been granted. Soon, you will begin to see the signs being built as you drive around the district. The FDR sign is first on the list to be installed, and our goal is to complete it in time for There have been some updates to the security systems. New cameras and intercoms were added at the entrances to the buildings. Also, interior cameras were needed. This project has been completed. Elliot will now talk about the Haviland Middle School heating project.
Thank you, Roger. Haviland Middle School project is underway. As many of you know, we started back earlier this school year, replacing circulation, hot water circulator pumps at service, the A Wing at Haviland. We have awarded and have already begun the background work for the doors and windows part. As you know, when we do a construction project that involves changing the way air flows through a building, sometimes doors and windows have to be replaced as part of that process as well. And currently, this week actually, we are out to bid for the mechanical portion of the project, which we will be reporting back to the board at the first-July meeting. So, we look to have an update on that one very, very soon as well. Some highlights on the drip. I mean, we talked about the three big capital projects, and Roger did a great job of explaining what's going on with that side. But on the drip side, we had some things that we were pretty proud of this year. Earlier this year, we were able to renovate the baseball infield, made it a little bit safer, more playable. Seemed to have very good responses from our, our baseball team. Amy's nodding, that's always a good sign. We also refinished the auditorium stage at FDR. We installed security mirrors throughout the FDR High School campus. You'll see them as you walk down the halls. They're convex mirrors that allow us to see around corners and into little places where people like to duck out and hide. It makes the building a little bit safer, easier for the monitors to watch as they roll through. Netherwood Elementary had the corridors and bathrooms repainted, also did some much-needed heating upgrades earlier this year. And on the next slide, I have a couple other highlights here. Did we miss that? Can we go back? Okay, that, that one must have not transferred over. But rest assured, lots of many, many good things on the drip. I won't profess to know them offhand, but I think I have some here in my notes. Yeah.
North Park gym floor.
Yes, North Park gym floor, Ralph R. Smith gutters and roof repairs, HPE. We have our universal pre-K there. And, and once we were in the process of reoccupying the building, we identified some heating deficiencies that were remedied earlier this year. And sidewalk and paving repairs. We all agree, we had a pretty rough winter, and it takes a toll on our walkways and driveways. And our guys have done a pretty solid job of making sure that those potholes disappear quick, fast, and in a hurry, almost as fast as they appear on us. But we're putting in a lot of work on that. So, just some highlights, I wanted to share with you some of the process, of the projects that we've been pretty proud of for the year. And at this point, I'll open the floor for any questions or comments.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah. This is good information about what the master facilities, I'm sorry, the facilities steering forum has done. I appreciate the summary. One of the things that isn't covered is what's on your to-do list.
Lots and lots of things. Just perfect example, on tonight's agenda, the board will be reviewing and hopefully approving the replacement for the wheelchair lift at Ralph R. Smith Middle School, Elementary School, sorry. But that's a perfect example of how some projects jump from one side to the other in the master facilities plan. These are living documents. We, we make changes as we need to, as we progress through the year. The wheelchair lift replacement was a 1A capital project because it was at its end of life. We knew that at some point, it was no longer going to be repairable. That unit happened to malfunction and be, and not be able to be repaired at the end of the school year, and that's why you folks are seeing that tonight. So, that project did jump from the capital plan to the drip plan, and we're going to be working on that over the summer. We'll also be doing some grounds work to regrade certain playing surfaces at the high school and middle school, and performing carpentry work, plaster work. Jim and I have sat with all of our teams in the different trades, as well as our administrators as we're meeting towards the end of the year, to prioritize our summer work. So, I'll have some more information on that soon. But we've been, over the last couple of months, gearing up for the upcoming building condition survey and our interior work is related.
So, is there an intention, do you have intentions of a follow-up presentation on drip and cap priorities and...
Well, the cap hasn't changed much because we're waiting for the building condition survey results to be the final tweak to the capital plan. We've identified what we think, and when I say we, I mean the district administrators have really shared their concepts on priority, and that's the document that you folks have reviewed probably at the end of last year. With the building condition survey is completed at the end of this calendar year, we'll have a much clearer picture of any adjustments that need to be made to that. The drip is updated quarterly. It's available upon request for review. It's, it's a little bit more of the granular, nitty-gritty stuff that we do, so not everything is interesting to most people. So, bathroom renovations and the like, but, but it's pretty extensive, and I'm rather proud to say that we took something that was looked at maybe once a year prior to my arrival, and have us looking at it monthly, if not more frequently. So, at any point that the board would like a more formal update on those specific projects, I can certainly share that either from here at the podium or in print.
I'm not sure we need something formal, but if you could forward that, I assume it's in electronic format?
Yes, it's a multi-tabbed Excel spreadsheet.
Okay. I can glance through that.
Like I said, it's kind of long.
Yeah. I don't think I want that much detail, but...
We can, what we do is it's a, it's a three-year rolling document, so I can kind of excerpt out what we plan to do for '15, '16, as long as you don't hold me to every single item on the list. I can share that as a condensed...
Yeah, I'm not asking for a commitment. I'm just, I just want an idea of what you're thinking about.
Yeah, we can certainly share that. I can compress it down to just what's planned for this next 12-month cycle and share that with the board. That's pretty easy to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Elliot, just remind us about the building condition survey. Do we have a firm in hand yet to do that?
We have not yet. I'm still working with the administrators to determine how that's going to be made out.
And our timeline is...
We're, we're good to go. I mean, the timeline starts July 1, where we have until November 15 to complete it and July, and January 15 to submit it.
Submit it, okay.
We're gearing up to go out for bid, I believe.
Yeah, we, we're going to meet on that really soon, the next couple days, weeks.
Okay. Anything else? Well, Elliot, just because you're up there and you opened this door, Ralph R. Smith, that chairlift was kind of dead on arrival from the get-go. This new replacement, I'd like some assurance that we're not going to go through the same amount of the company can't provide service, or it goes out of business, or, I mean, that thing rarely worked the way it was supposed to.
Understood. Again, I wasn't here for the original, but I'd have had some pretty substantial headaches in the two and a half years that I've been with the district. I can tell you that it's a complete demolition and replacement. It's a full ground-up system from a new vendor, new manufacturer.
Okay.
State-of-the-art as far as the modernization of the equipment. And it is going to be warranted, so parts are readily available. And I don't have any concerns with the inability to fix it should something go wrong. But it was bid out with the total concept of a complete replacement.
Okay.
No recycled parts or anything.
Thank you.
Elliot, we have a couple of chairlifts, right?
Yes, sir, we do.
And I believe they were put, if I remember correctly, they were put in about the same time.
They all are, and they're all variations of the same model. The others are at Netherwood Elementary and Hyde Park Elementary. They are still functional at this time. The Hyde Park one, I don't know that it's, actually, neither of them is required by current student population, but that could change... current student population, but that could change at any time, and that's also for any visitors, parents, guests, teachers. So we do test them weekly, and right now, they're still functional. So they are still on the capital plan for replacement because of their end-of-life status. It's just that because they're still functioning, we didn't present it as an emergency repair.
They don't go around corners either.
No, they don't, actually. They're all two-stop, two-station tracks. This is the only one with three turns, or three stops and two turns. So it's a little bit more complicated.
While we're on the subject, I was going to wait till we came up on the agenda, but do you?
I figured he was there already, might as well.
Might as well do it. Service contracts, do you have yearly contracts with any local service companies, similar to elevator contracts?
For this lift?
For these lifts?
We were.
For all of them, actually.
We were looking to include that in the elevator contract for an applicable vendor to service it as well. I don't know that that's been completed yet for next year.
Yeah, I think they're separate in themselves from each other.
Some vendors do service both, but this particular unit would have to be treated separately because it'll be warranted for a year prior to us accepting it. So we'll have the warranty on the new one and then service on the old ones.
Well, then we, are you considering the service on the other ones?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Elliot.
Thanks.
I'm disappointed that I didn't see at least one reference to your.
I peeked at it when you were on.
I mean, come on. Okay, now we're up to 6.3 in the ESL update.
So there are a lot of updates and new regulations. The first one, is this really loud?
No.
It just seems to be. The first one is that English as a second language, the name has changed to English as a new language. So we're all practicing saying E-N-L instead of ESL. The teachers are E-N-L teachers instead of ESL teachers. The students are still English language learners, E-L-Ls or Ls, so we're practicing. So I've really tried to condense this, and it's difficult because, you know, the, my E-N-L folder for the year that just has one copy of every memo from state ed and guidance document is this thick this year. And although everything's been correct and beautifully done, there's been a lot of articulations of these things, and they're making these improvements very quickly. So some of the changes here, or I've tried to incorporate them all, there's now a review period of 45 days. So when we determine that someone is eligible as an English language learner, the parents can appeal the process once the student starts, and we can review that and possibly determine that that was a mistake, that the student maybe was nervous during the screening or something like that. Previously, that's not been possible. Once you're in, you're in. There's an additional parent meeting each year to talk about language development, so it can't be part of a meet-the-staff or part of a regular parent conference that's scheduled for everyone else, and those have already been scheduled. And professional development and language acquisition, this is, you know, a state mandate, unfunded. Fifteen percent of all professional development for teachers, for all classroom teachers, needs to be about language acquisition, and for all of our E-N-L teachers, 50% of their professional development needs to be language acquisition or strategies specific to English language learners or related kinds of topics. So, and it goes on. But I will say that there's a blueprint for English language learners that is really a guidance document for all this work, and that we all feel in the department that it's really positive, and that this is really about, that all teachers are teachers of English language learners, and that good strategies for Ls are great strategies for all kids. And so we're really, you know, excited about it. It's just a lot to take in all at once. So here are some program changes. When you pull students out in a group, it can only be two grade levels, so like first and second, not first and third, for example. And then once students test out, they receive two years of mandatory service. And in the past, it's been a choice. When students test out, we determine if they need a year of transitional service, and we start having conversation about whether the student and the family want to return to home school. And at this point, it is going to be required even for students who test out, and the mandatory service needs to be integrated. So it can't be pull-out. The E-N-L teacher needs to go into the classroom every other day for a period for those students. So there's going to be some, you know, some scheduling issues there. And the push-in services are now mandated. So in the past, it's been a choice for districts to push in or pull out, just based on our numbers of students in the buildings, pullouts have been way more efficient for us. But, you know, depending on the level of service, that integration is required. And I probably say in another slide, but in case I don't, we are going to be reviewing all of our service when we get those NICE slot results. Unfortunately, they won't be early, so it might be late August. So we are holding off on a determination on any need for additional staffing of English as a new language teachers. Depending on the results, students may, many students may test out. Depending on the cut scores and the results, we may not need additional staff, but you may, you know, see me in September showing you that data so we can be in compliance. So there are some changes in exit criteria as well. So you can always, the NICE slot is the New York State English as a Second Language, I don't know if they're going to change that, achievement test. So passing the NICE slot, certainly. And then now there are some new ways to exit. So you can score either the advanced or expanding on that test, plus get over 65 on the Regents, or, you know, for younger students, a Level 3 on the 3-8 ELA. In fact, we did have two students meet that criteria this year, and we found out about that. One was a senior last year, so we were like, well, congratulations, you tested out and graduated. But there was another one that actually tested out. And then for students with disabilities, the Committee on Special Education can, has to make the decision about whether to provide accommodations for the NICE slot, which has not been an option before, or offer a new alternative assessment. And it's still in development, but what we've been told is that it's going to be aligned to the alternate assessment, the New York State alternate assessment for students with disabilities. So for those students, you know, the CSE would be able to make that determination, which will help a great deal, because in the past, those students have never been able to test So here's what we're doing. We've had ongoing training sessions for the English as a new language teachers, for administrators. We talk about it almost every administration meeting. I talked about staffing. And, you know, our, we are going to be in full compliance with the new regulations by September. The only difference is that we may not be quite up to grade with staffing. And we have been told, you know, and other superintendents are talking about, that there certainly will be somewhat of an understanding or a grace period with that. I think that the representative from the state talked to us about that, that it's understandable that districts may not be in full compliance with the program, staffing requirements on the first day of school. And I could say a lot more, and I have a lot more materials I can share with you, but I wanted to be brief.
Does anybody have any questions?
Just a couple. The requirement that the E-N-L teachers, that's probably the only time I'll get it back, I'll revert back to the old terminology tomorrow, that the 50% of their professional development for English as new language teachers, is this going to impact the professional development that they should be getting regarding Common Core? Because we still haven't completed all the training for that, I mean.
You know, it's going to be a mix. So, you know, Cora and I have had conversations about how a lot of this kind of work can really be embedded into the work for all teachers. So, you know, if we go above the 15% for everyone, we'll have less to make up on the other end. I don't want to exclude the English as a new language teachers from other training that will really benefit them. And I also don't want to pull them out, because that's the other thing to do, is to actually have less days in the classroom to make that up. So we're just going to be really balancing that out and getting a lot of input from them about that. But it's a very broad definition of what that training needs to look like. A lot of the, just the humanities kind of professional development or Common Core professional development we provided could probably qualify. So there's some latitude there.
And the requirement that students that do test out, other than seniors, requiring a mandatory integrated services, that's three out of six days a week, a period?
Right, and I asked that question because they, the way they had it, it was like a .5 class or .5 period, and we did get, you know, with our six-day cycle, I said, so can it be every other day for a full period? And they said, absolutely. So that's just what makes sense.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I'm probably confused by terminology here, but the second bullet under program changes, students who test out receive two years of mandatory integrated services, three out of six days. That makes it sound like they test out, which means they don't need services, and therefore we're obligated to give them integrated services.
Continue giving them services. Yeah. I think it's the understanding that, and again, it's based in really sound research, that English language learners learn academic English over a period of eight to 10 years, seven to 10 years, so that you can pass the NICE slot and still really be working on language acquisition for some time. So they're understanding that many students were left without some needed support, so they passed the NICE slot. And we've heard that from teachers, that, you know, students will test out and teachers say, um, you know, this is still really difficult for them, and they could still use some support. So it's a recognition of that.
Safety net.
Yeah. Yeah.
The testing out bar is low. Evident.
Yeah, I mean, we've had, we've had good testing numbers. I mean, we've had, you know, sometimes a quarter of our students test out in a given year.
Okay.
I just have one question. How many students are we talking about, or what's the percentage in the district?
Eighty-nine students.
Eight or nine?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
And that's, you know, give or take, year to year, moment to moment.
At like, what percentage of our students?
That many Ls?
About 2%? Are we at?
Eighty-nine.
At a 36.
Yeah, just under three.
He did the math.
You, you're better off saying just under three without giving a number, see, that way you don't look so.
Wide range of select answers.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But that would be about right. That brings us to physical education, 6.4, compliance.
And actually, I just want to add, geez, this is a little, I don't know, loud. One bit of pride, since I did not do a good job sending this information to Dr. Rycheck, so we have two students who are going to states tomorrow and Saturday for track.
Great.
Yeah, so we have Joe McKeown, who qualified in the pentathlon, and James Schaller, who qualified in the high jump. So just wanted to add that before we begin our presentation, so sorry I didn't send it, but it's really important news. It is good news.
Well, good evening, everyone. Amy and I are here, as you can see, to talk about phys ed compliance, and this is a topic that you've heard reference to many times over the years. And I'm going to ask Amy first to talk about the regulations and our current configuration for providing the instruction, and then I'm going to share with you a plan for next year. And I think we'll be very brief.
Sure.
So, so the current Commissioner's Regulation for Physical Education and its Commissioner's Regulation 135.4 states that students who are in kindergarten through third grade are supposed to receive daily physical education. And then students in grades four through six are supposed to receive physical education three times a week. Our current structure is very different than that. We've been making strides, but our current structure is that students are, when it says, okay, K2, participate in physical education three times per six-day cycle. And then our students.
Oops. Sorry. That's okay. Pay attention, Cora.
And then our students who are in grades three through five participate two times per six-day cycle. So again, we're pretty far off of what the state mandate is, and it is important to note that there are other school districts who are also not meeting the mandate. But again, our focus and our push is always to try to get closer to compliance. So over the years, we have done what we could to sort of continue to add some more physical education time, and that is part of our plan for this upcoming year.
Sure. And then take that away from me. So we've had some conversation at elementary council in particular, and recognizing that in order to gain full compliance, it would be an enormous cost to the district, it would be an enormous change to the instructional program, it seemed reasonable to start with very small steps. So we considered a number of options, but in the end, our recommendation is that for third grade next year, we will add one period of phys ed per cycle. And because of the teacher's contract, we still have to monitor closely the number of prep periods that everyone has and what those prep periods look like. So in this case, our third-grade students will have physical education that additional period of time, and students already have in their schedules a period of library. Did you do it too? You did. Okay, could you take that away? Thank you. There's something about it tonight. I've never done that.
It did, I saw that.
It did, okay. So there's a, there's a gremlin tonight. So, coming back to library, our third graders do go to the library once in a six-day cycle. In the next school year, rather than students going to that library period on their own while the teacher has a prep period, the classroom teacher and the library media specialist will co-teach that period. And we're excited about that as an opportunity because for, for one piece of it, with all of the work that's happening in technology and all of the supports that our library media specialists already offer, to do that in a co-teaching environment is a really nice expansion of that work. And the other way that we'd like to think about it is that with the focus on literacy and all the ways in which library media specialists support literacy, separate from the technology piece, what we're really doing is bringing that expertise into the classroom. I shared this news with the Violet Avenue staff today and really tried to emphasize that rather than thinking about this as a loss of instructional time, because there will be one more period per cycle that students are in a special, I've asked people to think about it in terms of that instructional time being enhanced by the addition of collaboration with that library media specialist. So that's our proposal. And the other piece that I would add in terms of the instructional day is that we certainly know a lot of research around students who have opportunity to move and have those gross motor skills really enhanced. There were a couple times a year or two ago where we talked about really trying to look at the master schedule for students who could start their day with phys ed, because we know what that does to the brain. So I really just wanted to add that piece because I think that every piece that we can add in terms of phys ed and that kind of support is going to benefit students academically as well. So additional physical education, additional collaboration and support for our third graders between the library media specialists and classroom teachers. And I think it's a small but very hopeful step toward greater compliance. And any questions you might have, we're happy to take.
Any?
I have one.
Yep.
The Regulation 135.4, how long has that been in place?
That's an Amy question, as long as we know of.
Yeah, as far as I know, the regulation started in the early 70s.
Really, that long?
Yes. And then it's been updated, but that part of the regulation has never changed.
Wow. Oh, we were in compliance when I was here. So I guess, I'm a little confused. Is it, we can't do the regulation because we don't have enough periods in a day, or because we can't get the instructional thing in if we did the?
Well, the issue, you know, there's a couple of issues with it. Because we haven't done it, we'd have to look at, obviously, if we added all of these additional physical education classes, teachers would have more prep time during the day, less instructional time if we just went to a regular schedule of specials, the way we currently manage it. So that right there would, you know, would be a challenge. The other thing is looking at space. So part of the desire, I guess, and the support around trying to do this incrementally is always looking at what are the implications of the changes. So if we add an additional period, what does that do to the quality of our program? So are we having classes that have to double up during the day? Are we having, you know, again, just looking at all of those pieces. So over time, moving closer to it, obviously, again, Cora mentioned about the research, I've, you know, I failed to mention, you know, there's tons of reports from the CDC, there's over 50 individual studies, you know, to support that physical activity increases academic achievement in a variety of ways. But, you know, it's just trying to balance everything, and, and again, the goal of the district hopefully is to, you know, move closer to that, because that's just one area where we're out of compliance.
Okay, but I'm concerned about the trade-offs. If I heard correctly, the free library period, which I think is a wonderful thing, is now a, not free, but it's a, it's a class. And I like the thought of children roaming around the library, pulling out books, looking And I like the thought of children roaming around the library, pulling out books, looking at them, seeing if I want to read that and putting it back in. I think that's really important, and now it sounds like we're not doing that.
Good point, thank you. Students will still have the book selection time, and I've observed the librarians, some of them, over the last couple of years, and what I've seen has been instruction along with that. So there have been formal lesson plans written for that library period. It's very rare, if at all, that the library period is just browsing and book selection. Students will still have that opportunity, but the instructional part of it will be done in a collaborative way.
Okay, but where do you go next? I mean, it just, there's a point where something's got to give. Either you got to have more time, or less prep time, or you have to have...
Well, that's exactly...
That's our challenge, for sure.
That's exactly why almost all school districts in New York State have been out of compliance since 1970.
Well, there must be at least one.
There's a couple.
There are few, even locally, there are a couple.
And more and more growth, so, you know, we'll be exploring different models, and it's going to take some time, but we can explore different models, and there's a lot of logistical...
I'm okay with adding another period.
Or two.
Longer school.
Or two.
Or a year.
Longer school day.
We can adopt a seventy-five minute hour.
Okay.
I have to admit, I find this a little surprising, you know, just learning that we're not in compliance with a reg. Just, there's just something about it makes me a little, only because there's certain regs that we've talked about that we would certainly like not to comply with, and we generally do, for whatever fear we do that. More of a broad question, do we know of other regs that we're not in compliance with? I mean, particularly academics or...
Actually, this is, yeah, this is the only area where, that I'm aware of, where we're out of compliance. And actually, you know, I said to Amy last year, for a while, they had been making some progress, and I said, "Start poking around again, let's see what we can do," and, you know, and so this year, they did. They started looking around, and we made progress. And we're hoping this is like, the leverage point to just keep going.
Yeah, I guess that's where I'd like, my next thought was, can we put together, even if it's a multi-year process, of how do we get into compliance? Because I do think that physical education is, you know, it's key to our, you know, the health of all of our people.
One of the things that we do struggle with, with time, and I'm just going to put it out there, because there are areas where we have no mandates, but we believe that it's a good experience for students. So we have several grade levels that have two periods of art per cycle, or two periods of music per cycle, and it would appear that we could become further in compliance if we swap those out with physical education classes. But because the district has a longstanding practice of providing additional services in art and music, it will be perceived as an attack on the art and music program if we touched those additional periods. So one of the things that's unique to our school district, and I was pretty much surprised, but in other school districts, they do not double up on other special area classes. So you have one art per cycle, or one music per cycle, and somewhere along the line, and there's a really long history and a really complicated answer, but somewhere along the line, you know, in this grade, we have two arts, in this grade, we have two music, and it's a really deep conversation if we want to talk about that, because as much research as there is to say that physical education supports the academic area, you can find four times that amount in music and, you know, similar amount in art. But what I, what we do know is that we are providing additional services in non-mandated areas. But I can tell you, John Vandalley's sitting here, his wife's a music teacher, the minute anybody hears that we will provide one less period of art. So we can't keep it all. We can't come into compliance and keep it all. And this is, and we value art and music. Our art and music programs are phenomenal, but we do have some wiggle room. If we started to say, "We will provide what is the normal art and music," that would be one wiggle room. There's certainly other models we can look at. There are other school districts that are managing this in different ways, but it's going to take a little bit of time to look at a multi-phase in. But that is one of the challenges of this district, that if we, if we look at some of the time that would be available that other school districts are using, it would be a loss to some of the other programs that have had that additional time.
So I have a question. Ten years ago, this was brought up, and we were told back then that recess time was counting. So we were definitely saying recess time does not count toward this...
Recess time, per the regulation, recess time cannot count toward physical education.
Any other questions?
Is there a statement elsewhere in the law that talks about the length of time or a total length of time?
Yeah. So what it is for elementary is a minimum of 120 minutes per week, not six days. So again, we're not, even by adding this, we're not even close to that time. We could obviously look at our structure, but even with the three times, we're not hitting the 120 minutes per week. And again, three times per six-day cycle. So we always have that extra day on the opposite week.
Okay. So the law, pardon me, the regulation specifies both length of time per week and number of sessions?
Yes, minutes.
Given what you said about the benefit...
That's specifically for elementary.
Sure, sure. Just out of curiosity, given what you said about the benefits of activity in the normal, we'll call it a workday, of the normal elementary student, while we may not be in compliance, and while we're still progressing towards that, has there been any consideration given to having several, maybe five days a week, at a shortened clip? So I don't know how many hours it averages out to per week, or how many minutes, but seems like if there's, well, I know personally, there's benefit to activity during the day just to stay awake. So, I mean, right now, it's two or three days per six-day cycle.
Twenty-five minutes a day.
Yeah, so has there been, any thought given to shortening the sessions and making it, you know, a daily event?
Yeah, so, I mean, even with that, we're still not quite there. We could certainly look at that. That would still increase the number of classes that teachers are teaching. The other challenge is twenty-five minutes. By the time the students arrive, by the time you introduce an activity, it's a real short amount of time to do any kind of quality instruction. So currently, we have thirty-five minute classes, and I would say we need every bit of that thirty-five minutes, you know, to make it work. You know, so that would be a challenge certainly in reducing it. I mean, we've considered probably every scenario you could imagine in trying to come up with how we could get, you know, move closer to compliance, and just how we can increase activity in general for all of our elementary school students.
Quick question. A hundred and twenty minutes, that's just for third grade and up? It's not, is that a hundred and twenty minutes for first through third, too?
Yeah, it's K, it's K through the six. And six, if it's at elementary. Six in our middle school apply to the secondary regulations.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Doug, if I can interrupt you just for one second, something I thought about coming here, and I've been toying with it for a while, because we talk about pride, and we always talk about pride in our schools. In today's paper, the Poughkeepsie Journal, there's an article regarding what I consider extreme pride of former students of our district. This weekend, they're running the walkway half marathon and marathon, and there's a group that's going to be running called Rocky's Runners. This is a group that's been formed by local, I believe it's actually all girls, who were classmates of a wonderful lady, Christine Rock, young lady. I actually knew very well from softball, and I coached, I actually was advisor for her class. She passed away last year after a seven-year battle with cancer, and this group got together trying to think of something they could do, and they come up with this concept of providing services to families that are dedicated to making life as comfortable and as well for a member of the family that is suffering from cancer, something I've experienced, something that I watched them experience in terms of the disruption of family life and other things that go on. It was a comment she made that they took to heart. And if you look at the article, you know, I think it's extreme pride we should be taking in this group of students, because obviously, I believe, we instilled in them, in their time in the Hyde Park School District, a concern for community and a concern for their peers that has exhibited themselves in several ways. I experienced it personally some six years ago, when a group of graduates who'd been out of school for better than a decade that went to school, my son came to us and asked, "Would we support, or would we object to them coming up with a remembrance for my son and his battle with cancer, to do something for enhancing the cancer facilities in the Hudson River Valley area?" And here's another example of that going on, again, from students, that I think is, you know, notable.
Yes, very much. Any other comments? May I have a motion for public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Pose. Thank you, we're now in public participation. If anybody would like to address the board, please come up to the mic and...
That's it.
We know this man.
Yes, I'm going to make this short and sweet. My name is Chris Fiorentino, and you guys will be seeing me on a future agenda for resignation. And I just wanted to thank the Hyde Park community for an amazing experience. If I could have, I would have spent the rest of my career in Hyde Park, but I was presented with a great opportunity. I loved being a Hyde Park educator, and it's something that I consider like a badge of honor. I wanted to publicly thank and acknowledge amazing people that I've worked with over my years in Hyde Park. I wanted to thank Cora, Greer, Aviva, Barbara Marine, and Eric Shaw. You're amazing people, and I'm extremely appreciative for the time and advice that you guys have spent on me, and I know that I'm a better person for having known you guys. These people are gems, and you want to hold on to these people for as long as possible. They do amazing things. Especially Eric Shaw, he's the most dedicated and driven person I've ever worked with. His main focus is always kids, and it drives everything he does. So thank you again, and I had the best experience possible at Hyde Park.
Good luck, good luck, we'll miss you. What he didn't say is that he was an administrator here, and then an assistant principal that returned to the classroom for one year, you know, during the birth of his first child, and then decided to go back into administration, and he was the successful candidate for the principalship at Highland Falls Fort Montgomery Middle School. So definitely a promotion and congratulations all the way around. We will miss him. He was a dynamo.
He'll definitely be an asset to that school. Okay, anybody else like to address the board? I would have been disappointed if you sat there the whole time.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nicolette Rogers, and this is Merlin Tisler. We're both current seniors at FDR for a little bit longer. We just wanted to speak to you all tonight about some feelings towards the Common Core and the implementation of it. So the both of us, I kind of consider us kind of lucky, but we've been honors students, and we've only been brushed with the Common Core. We both took the exam last year as juniors for the English Common Core. And it's been brought to my attention that there's, there's like a lack of interest in English now, and I just want to like, kind of push for some support to the humanities. I understand that Common Core like, is a requirement, but as for the modules that the teachers are using, I'm encouraging some ability to adapt those and include some more creativity from the teachers, and as well as open the door to extending like, what the students are doing, because they're not able to read full books, and I feel like they're missing out on really important works of literature that they should be like, shown before college and higher education and stuff like that. So I just wanted to address that concern.
Hi, my name is Merlin. Quick disclaimers, we don't have a slideshow, so you don't have to worry about any technical Additionally, we're both going to be humanities majors in college. I'm going to be an English Communications major, a double major in that. She's going to be a marketing and communications major. So that's our main, our main focus today, is the humanities and how Common Core affects that. Through my research and seeing how mathematics will be affected by it, also has me very frightened, but I will address that very minimally due to the fact that we have very little to do with the subject. English is one of the driving forces of what Nikki and I believe in, and it's, it's something that you have to understand the English language and how to communicate to be able to live in society. Mr. Carl Defoe was my Duchess English teacher this year, and we did the program through FDR with Nikki and a bunch of other students. And one of the most important things he's taught us, and it was actually on our final that we just took the other day, and the question was, in his 102 class, which is essentially an analysis of literature class, the question was, "What is, what is one of the most important things you've learned in this course?" And this is the second of the two courses that he teaches, being in the second semester after the 101 class, which is essentially just understanding how to write and becoming a good writer. So now we have to understand what literature means, and we, I wrote about the, essentially the importance of what it means to understand what is written. You have to understand an author to be able, to be able to understand why the author wrote what he wrote. For instance, reading Macbeth, if I just read an excerpt of A Floating Dagger in Macbeth, if you've read it by William Shakespeare, it means very little to me to see a floating dagger in a three-page excerpt of the scene. I don't care about a floating dagger if I don't read the entire story. Although if it is essential to the actual plot and the understanding of the characters, it means nothing if you don't read the entire story. My point being is that with the implementation of Common Core and the modules in the humanities, including English specifically, you're taking away that opportunity for students to truly understand what it means to see a floating dagger, or truly understand what even a color means in a play or in a book. It's very hard to take a three-page excerpt and have an author express his entire motive for the story, or understand why the characters mean what they mean, or their symbolism behind their existence. That's the whole idea of characterization in the first place, is that they develop throughout the story. In A Streetcar Named Desire by Tennessee Williams, a character named Blanche changes drastically throughout the entire story. Or even Stanley, who changes drastically throughout the entire story, is essential to not only the plot, but the understanding of humanity in general. And to only read scene five or scene three from that play does not properly understand how people can adapt to their environments or change according to their life. Different stimuli change people's reactions. And to understand that is impossible if you only read scene one, or if you only read scene six, or even the last scene. You can't understand where someone came from if you only read the last scene of a story. So our point here is that we really encourage more of an adaptation for teachers to be able to do, have more freedom with their, with their teachings, and allow teachers to not teach to a test, because that's essentially what we are doing now, is forcing teachers to teach to a test and be able to answer a certain amount of multiple choice questions in a certain amount of minutes, rather than truly understanding what literature means and how it's affected society for hundreds of years, specifically American literature. and how it's affected society for hundreds of years. Specifically, American literature. It's something that stems from the revolution and comes even into modern times. And they reflect history. George Orwell, for instance, even though he wasn't, even though he, he, his, his whole idea was understanding the idea of communism and what it can do to a society through a, an imaginary story. To read one scene of that doesn't properly understand what corruption can do. Or even Lord of the Flies, to understand that story by reading one scene, you'll never understand what corruption means if you don't understand where it stems from and where it ends. So, we just encourage the, the more, the consideration of adapting the modules and being able to allow teachers more creative freedom with their work because we feel that they're really limited, even if we just saw a glimpse of their, of the implementation of the Common Core. And we just really hope that we focus entirely on the most important part of education and that's sprouting up young people from a foundation, building that foundation and making them intelligent human beings that can play big parts in society and not only understand culture, but understand themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Somehow, I think you're going to be successful in life. John?
Because I haven't been to a board meeting in a while. I just had a simple question about ENL initially, but after, where'd he go? He escaped. It all starts out because really I speak English as a new language, okay? I was an immigrant and I guess I'm going to have to take this a little bit farther now too than what I was going to ask. It was also true that when I came to high school at the age of 15 from another country, I didn't learn English through tests and, you know, routine stuff. I mean, it was the English teacher that took me aside, handed me books, turned me loose, turned me loose in the library, had me write small stories. And, and that was just, in addition to sending me to summer school for English, remedial English. And by the time September came, came around, I was speaking English enough to get by. And actually learned and I graduated from high school, so. So, I mean, all this talk about, talk about common care, Common Core and affecting the library period and, you know, it sounds like it's being made more rigid. And even, even growing up in Europe, one of the greatest things I had in elementary school was we, we had a teacher that had a habit of coming in a half hour late every day. And basically, there was a huge stack of books sitting in the back of the room and that's all we did, did. We all just picked out a book, read it, and, you know, the whole book. And it was, I really think I'm still being inspired by some of the books that I read. So, you know, it's, it's all very important and I think it crosses, it comes across all these other areas that we've been talking about. And I do have to talk about the impact to the specials, if you do indeed lessen them as, as has been raised as a possibility. I would say some years back, it might not have been as much of a problem. I mean, if, again, these special teachers would not already be overburdened by the implementation of Common Core and all the extra paperwork that they have to do where they find they have even less time now to teach what they, what they're supposed to teach in the first place. And, and I'm not just talking about music teachers either, although I'm a little biased in that area. And that's just a comment that I want to make. Another comment I would like to make or rather, it was an observation. Some weeks back, I went to pick up our French foreign exchange student at the end of the weekend in, in Monticello. And all these kids from all these different countries spoke about their experiences and everything else. And they also talked a little bit about what their school year was like. And what really blew me away was there was one student from Thailand. He told me he goes to school six days a week, 12 hours a day. How in the hell are we ever going to catch up to these people? I mean, that's, that's really my question unless we start looking at the very model that our public education system is. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Would anybody else like to address the board? Mr. Hughes.
Good evening. Steve Hughes, district resident. I was wondering whether and how you're going to gauge the benefit of adding additional physical activity to the student's day or week. Seems that with all the complaining that we as a community have done about New York State mandates, this is a perfect opportunity to decide, you know, why we want to do this, regardless of this being a state mandate, so.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Do I have a motion to close? Public participation, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. Would anybody like to comment?
Yeah, I'll certainly agree with Mr. Hughes that I think that's a worthy consideration. I've had concerns with the rigidity of the phys ed regulations for several years, not only this aspect of it, but others. And while I'm a firm believer in phys ed, I also think that taking away educational time from the other topics might not be the best idea. So, it would be nice to have an objective method of judging precisely how we do that and what the impact is.
Any other comments? I'd just like to make a comment that if those two young people are representative as products of our school system, then I think we're doing a darn good job. Because, very well spoken and obviously passionate about English certainly and education in general. So, I think we're not missing a lot. I mean, somehow, they managed to, or perhaps we can, we can say that their first 10 years in school got them there and the last two kind of messed them up, but I don't know if that's true.
Oh.
Yeah, they certainly, they certainly, it reminds me of when they came, similar students came and said, look, we want more English. We want another class. We want this. I've always been happy to hear people get up at the podium and say, we want more academics. I mean, that's, that's great. So, if you want to comment on the, the...
I do, just briefly, with the board's permission. I'm so glad that they came. They're very articulate. They're passionate about the work. And there are a couple of issues that they raised that I just want to respond to. One is that what we heard was a concern about teachers' autonomy and flexibility and the capacity to adapt the modules. We were fortunate this year to receive some grant money that allowed us to pay teachers a stipend, to come together and work with the Director of Humanities and the Director of Math and Science to really evaluate what the implementation of those modules has looked like. So, they have come together a number of times and taken a look at each module, talked about what that implementation looked like, what, what did they, what did they personally and professionally enjoy or not about the, the way the modules were created? How did students respond to the assessments? And we're in the process of gathering all of the input from them about what implementation should look like. So, I, I wanted to reassure you that, you know, there is conversation. We are asking teachers for feedback. And just as recently as a couple of days ago, we had a rather lengthy conversation about the input we've been getting at K5. So, that project was K12 for both A and math. And as we're getting those recommendations in a more formal way from the directors, we're really taking a look at that. The other thing is that I, I heard a little bit of completely unintended contradiction. And it made me smile because the very thing that they were expressing concern about is something that they're clearly also getting in their classroom. So, I, I heard them express concern about students having the opportunity to really dig deeply into a text and be able to talk about author's craft and author's purpose and, and the meaning of the language. And those are the tasks that students are doing in the Common Core modules. And they're perfect examples of, of having done it really, really well. They're seniors, so last year as juniors, they experienced one module. Last year, our teachers only did one as the, the first year of implementation. And as seniors, there are no modules. In, in the senior classes, it's all that choice. You might remember several years ago, we switched from English 12, which was sort of English 12 that might look really different depending on who you get, to a list of at least eight or 10 different English courses, including American Lit, which you heard so, so well spoken of. So, it, it, it just causes me to, to feel confident that some of the work that we're doing has allowed them to speak as eloquently as they did. So, I just, I wanted to share that. But also just reassure you that we are very strategically getting input from teachers and making some decisions about what our expectations will be based on all of that input.
But they had, they did make a point that it's been in the paper. It's been about short things, not reading a whole book. You read about that all the time.
Yep. And there are some cases where students do read excerpts and it's for a very particular purpose. But in no way does the Common Core throw away the reading of a, a complete text or a complete novel or a complete play.
That's what I wanted to hear.
So, you were prompting me to say that out loud. Thank you, Doug.
Well, you know, Cora, what I felt I heard from them was they've, they've experienced, they indicated, we've only been touched by one module, by one course.
Right.
And their concern is, as I've heard it, they know where they are. They know what they can do. They have, they've, they've got great trust and they put great value in what their teachers have accomplished. And I heard a concern that if the Common Core goes the way they understand it's going, that they're going to be deprived of the things they benefited from over 12 years of, of education. Because it's going to be segmented, it's going to be pointed. It's going to deal with things that, that don't include the kinds of stuff that English courses provide over a long period of time. The ability to take two or three novels, dealing with the same subject from two or three authors, be able to read them and to be able to differentiate what each one is saying and what the benefits are, the realities are, what the backgrounds have done. That kind of stuff, to me, is extremely significant and can be lost in this.
Yeah, I, I agree, Dan, that it's critically important. What I'm not sure of is that it's lost. You know, I, I heard a reference to, we're now asking teachers to teach to a test that relies on multiple choice questions. I was at the high school the 2nd of July when students took the Common Core ELA exam and looked over it with teachers. And yes, there are multiple choice questions. There always have been. And, and there's a role for multiple choice questions. But there's a heavy reliance on a student's capacity to read multiple samples of work and to draw conclusions and to form a position and defend that position. In this case, one of the tasks was to read three different arguments either for or against pain or athletes. Highly engaging topic for our students. Some of the samples were for, some were against. They needed to read them, analyze them, form their, their argument, and defend that argument by going into the text. So, in no way are, are the assessments diminishing in any way. In fact, I would suggest it's, it's elevating our emphasis on high-level thinking, creating an argument, pulling evidence from text, thinking about multiple perspectives and, and defending why an author made that point and, and how they did it. So, I, I think there is still some confusion out there about what a module actually looks like. I would happily sit down for an hour or so with any one of you and go through one and show you the kinds of lessons and, and assessment tasks students are doing. They're actually doing more reading and writing than some students may have been doing in earlier grades and at another time. So, I, I'm happy to sit with anyone. And I, I just, I so appreciate that they were so articulate because as Doug said, some of what we're doing must be just right to produce students like that.
You reminded me, a friend of mine, his son said on that particular kind of test, he liked that kind of test because he didn't have to study for it. He just, oh, because you can't study for it.
That's right. You have to think.
So, he was, he was happy. The, he thought, wow, why is everybody complaining? This is a good deal. But that was him, you know, not, not everybody says that.
And it's not about regurgitating facts and figures. Yeah.
Yeah, it was, I, I thought that was an interesting perspective that he did. And the other thing, for John, all those six-day, 12-hour, they, it used, I don't know what it is like now, but it used to be those countries were envious of the creativity involved in the United States program. And if you look at how many of those students want to come to college in this country, then you might get a better feel for the balance of, you know, this and that. Yeah, yeah. So, all I wanted to say about that, so.
Doug, I also wanted to comment on that. And I value John's perspective on being an ELN, ENL learner historically. But I have to say that I, I take issue with anybody who says that we have catching up to do. I think that there's a number of statistical studies that show that the United States isn't necessarily the, the best educational system in the world. And I challenge those because I think it's based on the statistics that go into them. I, I think if you look at the, the fact that we try to educate every student in the country, and there is country, there are countries in the, those statistical studies that don't. They just take the ones that come through the door, the ones that are invited. I, I think that there's so much variation in that that it's hard to really state who's better than who. But I don't, I don't think that we need to focus on catching up or being ahead at all. I think we need to look at the system and develop the political will to fix the inequities in our system. I think that's the, the prime focus that we should all have as a, as a political entity.
Thank you. Now, we have the board discussions. We have, right? Fund balance. Good evening, everybody. I wish we could continue the conversation about all the great things that were discussed in public participation and before that, or English or athletics or any of the great things. But we've got to switch gears a little bit to discuss and spark some conversation about our estimates on fund balance. And it is the end of the year in the business office, so things are being put together, cleaned up. There are some great examples of spending that still has to happen. The wheelchair lift being a great example. Technology, some things are, you know, so, just so busy in some of these departments, we have to let them spend throughout June. And so, this is just a recommendation and it's just an estimate at this point in time. It's important to understand that this could change quite a bit by the time we get to the end of June. And that is, that is still an estimate. The orders can make changes in, in July and August. That could change it. So, again, it was a board goal to have this conversation and talk about fund balance a little bit and to show you where we are. There is an excellent example of something that we're still working on, the bond for the last capital project and whether or not that, that's going to affect what, you know, what we're showing tonight. And we're working on that together and have to have good conversations about, you know, how that might change the, the fund balance outcome. So, again, we're still working on it. And, you know, people, you know, have called our fund balance, like our savings or our rainy day funds. But it's just basically the revenues and expenses. It's like your household. You make a certain amount of money and you spend a certain amount of money. And so does the school district. So, if you put into perspective, as, you know, you in your household, it's easier to understand. So if you put into perspective, as, you know, you in your household, it's easier to understand. The school district brings in revenues and it spends, and the difference between that becomes, you know, what's the difference at the end of the year? Fund balance contributors are sometimes savings that are made. A lot of, all of our administrators work very hard, all of our employees, and I would say, and I've seen examples of that year after year, where people get great deals, you know, thought during budget season it was going to cost this, but then wound up, you know, going out to bid or putting out an RFP and saving money. And sometimes we get some money that we didn't expect that we were going to get. We're always happy to get extra money. Good news, I don't know if how good it is, but it looks very positively that we will be under our 4% this year. That's something that we've struggled with year after year, so strive to stay as close to the 4% as we can. And right now, it looks like it's about anywhere between 3.1 and 3.9, depending on how the outcomes of some of the things that we're going to talk about. So the components, just as a reminder, I put this slide up every single year, but it's important because I'm going to be using these terms as we continue on. But the four components of fund balance, there's two items, and the first, assigned, and that's carryover encumbrances is number one, and then the amount that we commit from fund balance for the following year. So whatever we decided to put towards 15, 16 budget would be called unassigned. Non-spendable, a perfect example of that, and these are prepaid expenses, is we have to pay certain expenses in June for July. So a great example is our health insurance. We pay that one month ahead. So that's nothing, that's the biggest one. But there are some other small ones as well. So you'll see that restricted, and that's all the reserves. And we're going to talk about reserves tonight and look at, you know, where we are and what we recommend at this point in time. And then the unassigned, which I talked about, that's the 4%. Last year, at the end of 13, 14, our total fund balances was 16,211. Again, if you look through, you'll see that there was non-spendable of 1.1. We had restricted reserves of 7.1. Our assigned, our contribution towards 14, 15 was $3,500,000. And then our assigned was 397. And then our 4% was 3990. For 14, 15, I didn't put a total on the bottom on purpose, but I'll certainly give it to you. You'll see the same categories. You have your prepaid expenses. Like I said, health insurance, about $1 million of that is the prepaid expense. Our assigned, our carryover, our carryover encumbrances at this point in time is $400,000. Our assigned, or appropriated for 14, 15 includes an ERS reduction, which I'll talk about a little bit more in the following slides. But there was a $250,000 piece of that that will come up in a little bit, but that's $3,218,000, and that was the assigned that had two pieces to it. Our restricted, is our reserves is up to 9 million. And our unassigned, what we're allowed to maintain is 3, 4, and that's actually under the limit right now, under the 4% limit by $89,000. So again, this is where we are right now. The reserve recommendation, and again, this is just where we are right, actually in the beginning of June for 14, 15. There was a recommendation made by our auditors to increase the amount of ERS liability that we have. They told us, I think it was up to four years that we should have, and we do not have that at all. And I'll show that in the next slide. But as of right now, we were recommending $1.8 million going to the ERS. And there's a net on that, that I'm going to go to the next slide real quick. If you see the ERS return of contribution, it's adding from the $2 million that we currently have funded, which will bring us up to the new balance of 3.9. I'm going to go back. The reduction of the budget would be the $250,000. With regards to ERS, you have to also have a span, a plan for spending it down. So we assigned or spoke about during budget season, taking $250,000 and reducing the budget by that amount. So that's exactly what we did, is we reduced what we put in the budget for $250,000. Now we're taking it out of the reserve. On the other hand, the $1,819 is the net of what the auditor spoke about with regards to the increase. So 2,69 minus 250 would give you the 1,819. So. And again, everything stays the same. The reserve for tax surcharges, the next slide's going to really explain that much better. So I'll hold off on, that's also a net. We're not really increasing it. We're actually keeping it exactly the same, and I'll explain that in a minute. And the 1.8 is from the slide before I spoke about with regards to ERS. And I'll talk a little bit about tax surcharges. There's certain things that we have to do with regards to tax surcharges, and that includes establishing a new reserve each year. And this is kind of new to us. The auditors spoke to us about doing this. And then the second part is to fund it each year. So at the end of each fiscal year, it's our responsibility to establish, fund, and this year we have to reduce because we have some old tax certs that are on the rolls that need to be reduced. And that's, this will be the last time that we do that. So you'll see where our recommendations are for 14, 15. The board should establish the 14, 15 tax, tax surcharge reserve. It's important to understand that this won't be on the agenda until the 25th. All of the recommendations and resolutions will be ready for your review to look at and to understand before the 25th. Certainly continue the conversation if we need to, if things change, and have that continued discussion. So again, number two, the fund, we want to fund it by the 1.0, 1,050, $1,050,000. And this represents about half of our maximum potential liability, is where we've been trying to stay at. And then the board should reduce the old tax reserve by 672. So if you take the 1,050, and you subtract the 672, there's your 378. So again, that's a net. And that's where we are. So I'll open up for questions.
Any questions? I have one question.
Sure.
The tax reserves, if we create one for each year, how far back do they go? Do we have money for, say, we get a judgment on back taxes back to 2011? Is there a special balance for that school year?
We keep records, you know, as much as we possibly can with regards to years, with regards to funding them, keeping money in the actual reserve.
There's only one fund then.
Right.
But you can, so you can take from that fund for any previous year?
But yes.
But it has to be?
I think it's about four years.
It has to be authorized each year? Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, let me just try to, does, is it necessary for the tax to have been challenged back to that year? In other words, you, we're keeping funds available because there are challenges back to those years, correct?
Correct.
Right, so it's not, we're not just putting it there, it's there because there's a reason. There's a, there's a contest out there that's yet to hit the courts, yet to be decided, so it's a potential liability. So, so is the reduction of the old tax reserve, the 672, actually is a result of?
Not spending.
Years past, that now there's no longer any open contest in those years? Okay.
Okay, yeah, that makes more sense. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
And now we have the discussion on board officer, I mean, I'm sorry, review of the board meetings. I'm just wrapping along here. Draft board meetings. Everybody get a chance to look at that? There's always a couple months where we go with one meeting instead of two, like in November and December, because of the big holidays. And there's also the times where we put stuff in as a placeholder, so it looked okay to me. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
The only thing is May 26 isn't highlighted? At least on my document?
I think it's light.
Light?
I'll change that. It's the other one. 26.
So, so May 26 is a regular meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments? Thank you. Now, our last board discussion on the board officer election process. So we've done a little research, Debbie has done a little research, and what we've found out, it's kind of, I was kind of surprised. There are, for instance, there's no requirement for a vice president. It's optional, but it's recommended.
And it's nice to have one.
Yeah, the, yeah, it's really, I was surprised at that. Also, according to the lawyers at State Education and our NISM people, you can't make any qualifications on. So I want to start, the discussion is, you can't have term limits, you can't have a progression, you can't have a lot of stuff according to the law. So I don't know where we go from here. According to them, you have an election each year, and that's it.
That's stated law. That's educational law.
Educational law, I'm sorry.
Makes it pretty clear.
So, yeah. I understand why we have this on the agenda. You know, I think every year for five years, I put my name in for president, and every year I got voted down. So, you know, you know, I was certainly in favor of letting other people, you know, do it if they really wanted to do it. And I still am in favor, but apparently the law says you have a vote, and that's it, so.
I think it also has to be a vote that everyone in the public can see how each board member votes.
Oh, yes, well, that goes without saying, it's a public vote with ballots and everything. Anybody else got any comments?
We've got two topics here to discuss. One is the student board member.
Yes.
And the other is board officer elections. So.
Correct.
I asked.
Get the one out first.
Yeah, I asked for the board, board election discussion. I think Doug has served with distinction for the last two years. I know how much time and effort that is. So on one hand, I don't feel that it's fair to stick him with the job. On the other, I am willing to step up and take a year and give Doug a year off. But I think that it would be, it's a great experience for every board member to do it at least once. So I wanted to find out if there's any interest from any other board member in the position.
Wow, it's like asking for a volunteer, and everybody steps backwards.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, I've done it for a number of years, and it is, it is a really good experience. I mean, you know, I, although I haven't fully, fully, fully decided yet, I think, you know, I had kind of made a promise to myself and the world that when I stepped forward to join the board this time around, it was going to be for one term only. And I'm entering the last year, and I'm not really sure becoming the president in the last year is appropriate. I don't want to make myself a lame duck yet, but I mean, unless something drastically changes next year, you know, hint, hint, hint to the community, you know, you know, as far as coming forward with another candidate, you know. And I'm also, you know, you know, the, taking on the, just this year, the chair of the board of Northern Dutchess Hospital, and that's a two-year stint. So, yeah, it keeps me kind of busy and, you know, not looking to take on any additional responsibilities. But it is good, you know, I think, you know, to, you know, either give other people opportunities or, you know, you know, but anyway, just to answer your question, that would not be something I would be doing next year, so.
And the other, the other possibility is that if someone's interested, but they're not necessarily interested in jumping into the president's role, is to serve as vice president for a year to learn the ropes and understand the responsibilities, at least get a better view of what goes on. Dan has served with distinction in that position for quite a while, and I'm not necessarily interested in pushing him aside. But if we are going to rotate the president's seat, and I think that's a healthy thing to do, then I think the other healthy thing to do is to let someone learn the role by first stepping in as vice president.
Okay, well, my opinion is if somebody hasn't been on the board, has, on the board and hasn't been an officer, they should get an opportunity to do that. If it's down to people who already have been in office, then I say we just have an election and whatever happens, happens. I will have to admit, I will admit publicly, I kind of like this job. It's, and it's not an ego thing. I have the time, I enjoy going to things, I'm available to come down here two or three times, sometimes more, four or five times a week, because I'm retired, though. And it, now that I've done it for two years, I'm just feeling comfortable, actually, in the job. But, you know, that's up to you guys, you know. We'll have an election, and we're, then I'm happy to move over if somebody, if you want somebody else, that's, but I would say specifically, you know, if, especially Jeff wants to be, or Gary, or Perry, don't run, Perry. I would, I would happily let that stand aside for that. I would.
All right.
Just cranking the numbers with the periods or terms of three years, there's no way of guaranteeing everybody an opportunity.
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the way we do it in the hospital board is, you know, and there's actually two vice chairs and, you know, but you kind of move up in the officer ranks, and, you know, it's two-year terms in each officer position, so, or I shouldn't, it's not a term, it's two years that you're kind of sitting in it before you move up the next rank. But on the other hand, that particular, that, the structure of that particular board is, you know, three, three-year terms, renewable, and you're not, you're not standing for election, you're just getting appointed again, as long as you don't screw up or, you know, do something horrible. But I mean, you know, so you kind of, you know, when you step onto that board, you know you're in line on that board for nine years, so it kind of works. Here, you know, every three years, it's up to the whims of the public, you know, whether you return or not, although the last couple of years, if you really want to be here, you can continue to be here, it seems like. But, but no, I mean, you know, in all honesty, you know, you know, you have one controversial, you know, or two, two or three controversial events during a school year, and all of a sudden, yeah, that alters the course of what the board looks like. So, so that notion, well, I think it's certainly a noble one of having people in progression and rotating it around so that things don't get stagnant. It is a little difficult to do in this situation, just because of the nature of how board members are elected. I mean, quite frankly, if this board was going to stay the way it was, it probably could be done, but, you know, if, if, if the next couple of years end up looking like the last two years did in the election, where just nobody's coming forward, and it's the same old faces showing up here in July. I mean, you know, here we are, this year, you know, rolling into next year with the identical board sitting here, you know. You know, it's kind of an interesting and good place to be, I suppose, from stability point of view. But, yeah, it's, you know, so anyway, that's, yeah, I mean, Dan's right. I mean, you know, a three-year term really doesn't quote-unquote give anyone the opportunity unless, you know, but, but things the way they've been historically around here, I think people want to stick around as long as they can, they certainly can. You know, as far as getting on the board itself, rather than an officer position, I mean, you know, you know, we've got a number of you guys have been multiple terms, I was multiple terms, and, you know, it is certainly a possibility, but anyway. we've got a number of you guys have been multiple terms, I was multiple terms, and, you know, it is certainly a possibility, but anyway. I don't know why I'm talking so much, because I have no interest in it next year. I told you I was busy already, so, but anyway, just giving my thought on it, I guess, so.
Sharing your experience.
Perspective of a past President.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other, on that topic, or?
I suggest we move on to the student board member.
Okay.
Yeah, that one I want to take some time on, not take, what I meant by that is, that one, this one's important. I just, whatever we decide, I'd like to kind of move on this tonight, because we have a tendency, you know, sometimes, you know, and I count myself among it, sometimes we can't make a decision, and we kind of dither on something like this. I really don't want to go well into the school year next year and not have this person seated. I want this as quickly as possible, so I think we really kind of need to decide this and not keep putting it off, and, you know.
Okay. Well, the first, like you said, the first thing that we found out that is you can't have an alternate, even though there are some districts that do.
Yeah.
It's also against the education law. So, that leaves us with the who and the when. So, I think we should have a discussion on how that.
How the who is.
How the who is going to be.
How the who is determined.
I wasn't at the last board meeting, so I don't know if it was mentioned, but one of the best ideas I've heard so far did come from a student, actually. Doug and I heard it when we went into the government classes to present the budget. And that was to select a group of teachers, and probably teachers who maybe are advisors, maybe a coach, an advisor, you know, and a couple of teachers, or, you know, ask the principal to put together a group of teachers. And they, the student recommended that the teachers select a slate, you know, of students, and then the students vote. So, did you?
I did mention it last year, but, the last meeting. That seemed like a fair way to do it. I would like some connection between that student and the student government. I think that should be built in, that would be my recommendation. That, however, is not listed in the number of the. You can, you can.
Well, it could be a student selected by the high school student government.
Well, you can, under a student duly elected by the student body, fits, as long as you add in that we're also selecting the candidate slate. So, I guess, I guess that we, under the second bullet, we qualify with that approach. So, I guess, you know, it doesn't say that exactly there, but.
Doug, I would, just your comment about that the student, you're saying student government, should, the person should be in some way tied to the student government?
No, they should at least report back to the student government. They don't have to be in the student government or part of the student government, but they should at least report back and get ideas from, I would think, the student government to bring to the board, so this is a connection. That was my only thought.
We would hope the student government would then have a position on the board when they meet. I mean, to know that, the school I went to, we had, we had a representative that did go to the board meetings. This is the same way, they would have a representative to the board. So, I mean, we would, they would elect it, but they'd be on student government also, as a representative.
And that's not what.
Oh, it's kind of a new position in the student government?
Yeah.
That sounds like it would work.
Well, why don't we ask the student government to find a way to make this representative part of their government?
Well, that ultimately has to be up to them. I mean, you know, I really believe in leaving that alone to them. I just think that, I mean, I think they recognize if they're going to be involved in, you know, selecting somebody, however that is, I'm sure they would just, on their own undertaking, decide to have this individual report back to them, you know, at their meetings. I just can't imagine why they wouldn't, because I'm, you know.
I mean, it's too early.
Yeah.
This year, but I would think in future that picking a junior in the last year, in May or June of the year, prior to the senior year might work better, so that if they wanted to come to the organization meeting, for instance.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think they're going to be in tough straits, probably, given where we're in a school year to select somebody.
Probably talking about September.
Yeah, I agree, although, you know.
If we're talking September, by the time the students get back.
Yeah, and so, but at the end of that year of next year, I want the.
Yes, I would agree, and I, but I think you should also, you know, again, no dilly-dallying around. They have lots of assemblies and stuff, I think, that goes on early in the year, within the first week of school. This should be part of it, you know.
Make it happen, yeah.
Yeah.
They're really excited about it.
Yeah, and I think, when was the calendar, are we meeting the first Thursday right after school opens?
I don't know, we don't open school till midway through September.
Oh, that's right.
September ninth, so are we meeting before that? I just was looking at that calendar, I don't remember, but.
September tenth?
Yeah, I think we meet the first Thursday right after school opens.
We're meeting.
Yeah, school opens like the ninth or something like that? Yeah, I think it'll be the ninth, and we have the tenth, yeah.
It might be too early to hit the tenth, but I would, I would, I mean, I really.
By the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, by the next meeting in September, we should be able to seat somebody.
I, that should be doable.
I think so, I definitely think so.
So, we agreed we'll have a selection slate proposed by a group of teachers and the student government. Be put up for a student.
You need to put the principal in there, too.
And the principal, okay, and the principal. That covers all bases, I think.
How is, how is that group of, if I understood your original explanation, how's that group of faculty chosen?
I'd let the principal select, you know, three or four teachers that are, you know, I would imagine he would want the student, the SGO advisor, you know, the, maybe a government teacher, maybe, you know, somebody from some of the different areas, athletics, or one of the, you know. I think the principal would be able to put together a slate of people, of, you know, the people who are really involved in student organizations, whether it's, you know, the class advisors, you know, you think of somebody like Doug Edgerton, or even Jill Fuller. He may even want somebody like Jill Fuller on the committee. But I think he could put together a committee that's well-balanced and representative of, you know, the whole concept of government and some other mixes. And I have a feeling it would take these teachers probably not too long to come up with the students that, you know, they would see as viable candidates and be able to approach them.
Okay, so it sounds like the process is the principal organizes a committee, a nominating committee from the faculty. The faculty nominates a number of candidates, and we'll leave the number up to the faculty, and then there's a student election.
I assume you probably want to check for their interest, too, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely.
Somebody on the slate has no interest in doing it.
Yeah, that definitely.
It's not a draft.
And can I, can I suggest, Doug, or whoever's the President, or even if it's a couple of us, maybe we go up there, you know, early on when this slate is selected and meet with them, and explain kind of what the responsibilities are and what's expected.
Absolutely.
Just so that they, you know, understand, yeah, this is the real deal. You're being elected by your student body to be here, and, you know, it's seven to nine, or whatever, you know, twice a month, and, you know.
I, in the future, I don't know, we have to talk about it now, but I would like to tie that process to the board election and the budget thing for the next year, so that they're thinking in terms of, you know, that process.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea, actually.
Along the same time.
Yeah, really, because it's early enough, it's before, it's late enough in the year, but early enough before things get really crazy that the existing junior class, the rising seniors can decide, you know, and really kind of pick their person for next year.
Yeah. Are we going to have the whole student body vote?
Yeah, it has to be, if you're going to, if you're going to let them do that, it has to be the entire student body. It has to be a senior, you know, the individual has to be a senior, but the entire student body votes.
And the senior has to come from the junior class of the prior year, because.
Right, well, by the time we get around to this, they will be seniors, but yes.
Yeah, but because it does designate that the student, he has to be a student for two years in addition.
Vote on himself.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 it has to be a senior, but they have to have been attended the school for at least two years.
So, I'd make a thought more.
So, do we need to formalize the election process, or is that something that the advisors will?
No, we don't get it, I don't, let them figure that out.
They have votes, they have class officer votes, they're pretty familiar with the process.
Yep, they know what they're doing.
Well, we do have to put a policy in place before we do any of this.
We guess we're going to have to do that over the summer.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so, we can, we can put that in a policy.
I mean, I don't know how hard it would be, but it would, I think it would be ideal if we could really have that done by the organizational meeting.
The policy?
Yeah. Just because it's, you know, because, you know, I mean, everybody kind of knows what the game plan is when they roll into September.
We can meet and have a draft of it for maybe the next meeting, but we can't, unless you want to waive first consideration and approve the policy, it can't be done before the organizational meeting, it can't be adopted.
Yeah, that's a good point. The, just for everybody out there, normal procedure is to have two readings of a policy before it's adopted. We have in the past adopted on the first and waiving the second. Yeah, we go. Okay. So, Gary, you free the next couple of weeks somewhere in there, we can get, we can, okay, so we'll do that. Okay. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda as described in the, in the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say two things. One is on the personnel agenda, I would like to wish Mark Plecha all the best. He has had a number of excellent years as an assistant principal at the high school. We will miss him, and we wish him luck. And the other is just incredibly sad. I would just like to recognize Karen Stinfleen, who is on the personnel agenda. Karen was one of our ESL teachers that passed away recently, and we are still very much mourning her loss. And our condolences to her family and to her colleagues, who are still very much mourning her loss, so.
And I would just like to comment that I'm happy to say that we're doing the permanent probationary appointment of Elliot Garcia.
Absolutely.
I think, you know, Elliot's been, he's been around for a while, and we've kind of gotten used to him, and I guess we got to keep him now, but he's been a good addition, and I welcome him.
In spite of his reliance on risk technology, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed, thank you very much. It brings us down to special ed, right? I have a motion for ten point one, special education placements, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I've reviewed the packet, and I recommend its acceptance by the board.
All those in favor? Opposed, thank you. We have a motion for ten point two, the consultant agreement for special education services, as noted in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. Let me see if I can move here.
Can I just go back and ask something for a second? Too late, we already voted on it, but just, I just was a little curious why we had the, appointing the school physician. Not that it matters, I have no problem with Dr. Ritter, but why we appointed him, that's normally done at the organizational meeting. You know, some of these things, well, let's see here, yeah, I mean, that's just kind of one of those appointments that gets made as part of the organizational meeting.
It gets put on that one as well.
Oh, it does, okay.
I think, I know last year, we did it the same way. I don't know if they had to get the contract in.
Gotcha.
But it's already there.
Okay, good, good, okay.
It brings us to ten point three, bond resolution for capital project authorization, as listed in the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are we thinking about propane buses yet?
You know, I just spoke to the superintendent, who, I happen to know her personally from the article that you sent, Washingtonville Superintendent. I've known Robbie for a really long time, and she told me that she had, I don't know, somebody maybe in the facilities department who just kept, you know, kept at it. And so, she finally, and, and they started a few other green initiatives, and one of them was through a student club, and there was some interest, and he kept at it, and I guess the place where they learned a lot about it was in Canada. So, one day, she just told him, she told the guy who kept talking about it, she said, "You're going on a road trip." And she sent him to Canada to explore the possibility, and.
I'll drive.
As of today, that one-third of their fleet are propane, and they just plan to continue to phase it in. That was the district we went to, one of the tech visits. So, they have a couple of green initiatives going, and that was one of them, and she just, she, she said, I'd like to say it was something, you know, it was somebody bringing forward an idea, and kept saying it, and she said, "Okay, bring it back, and we'll start working on it," and they.
Gary, do you know if you need special mechanics for that kind of?
No, and actually, my understanding is that the mechanical repairs are very simple and minimal, less than, and you don't have to go far to find a school district that's using more and more of them.
Right, right.
You can go to Canada.
Yeah, you only have to go to Washington.
I guess I forgot to mention that this was a bond issued for the bus repair.
Or you can just fill a couple of districts north.
But I, I think it's worth having, you know, maybe a partnership with George and a board member, and, you know, where you start really
Talking about stepping backwards into an assignment.
I think it'd be great to look at.
Voca ritana in the winter, or? So, we haven't voted yet, all in favor?
It's been five years in the making.
All in favor.
Yeah.
Opposed, thank you. Ten point four.
So perhaps.
This is the, this is the second half of the. The acquisition of school buses, ten point four, as voted in the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Our good friends from SECR, ten point five. A secret type two action declaration of emergency work, as listed in the agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. And here we are, finally to the bid replacement for the chair lip. Ten point six, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I've just got one thought for Elliot, while you're still here, is looking at your spec on the, on the job and their, and the contractor's submittal, there's a discrepancy in the warranties. I don't know if you're aware of that. You have a longer warranty in your spec than they're offering in their quote.
I have to double-check that.
Yeah, check that.
Do you report on parts and labor, so I got to check both?
Both of them are different, so.
All in favor? Opposed, thank you. Now, we're back to public participation. May I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, we're back in public participation. You want another shot, John? Steve? Okay. I couldn't resist.
Okay. I might say I misspoke, but I'm starting to sound like a politician now, you know. Okay, I didn't really mean catching up, there was a rather poor choice of words, okay. I really meant that, you know, we seem to be draining a lot of technology here to other countries, and we really need to kind of maintain what we have here. That's, that's really what I was after, and I think other countries seem to do it by having longer school days, and all the teachers are going to kill me, but I really think we, it's, it's something we should look at, and that's it.
Also, fully funded by the government, most of them, too. Mr. Hughes.
Good evening again. I have an observation and a question about the student board.
Um, I have an, an observation and a question about the student board member. Uh, the obs, the observation is that if you don't set at least a minimum size for the slate of candidates, you have the risk of the principal being able to handpick the candidate. Um, the question is, will the results of the student election be made public as the results for the regular board members are made public?
I don't see why not.
Certainly could do that.
And, and also I don't think I received a question on my, or an answer on my earlier question about measuring the benefits of increasing athletic time.
Okay, anyone else? I'm not sure we have somebody who can answer it right at the moment, but, uh, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I would like to say that I did agree with you that I think we need an objective measure. Well, um, I, I guess that's okay, but the point is, somebody has already said-
Said, yeah.
That the law says that this is what, and unless we're trying to disprove that statement, then I don't know why we would do it, I guess. I mean, it would be nice to know, I guess.
I mean, you know, we talk about unfunded mandates and I get that, but I also don't want to spend a whole lot of effort and time trying to, trying to determine the efficacy of, of, of increased physical education time unless that can be easily done when, quite frankly, that's what the regulations say. I mean, that might be an appropriate exercise if this was something we wanted to do, it wasn't born in the regulations, but, you know, I, I get it, it's a noble idea, but let's not waste a lot of time doing something that-
And I, I, yeah, and I would actually just, you know, say if somebody wants to, you know, look at some of the research that exists, why, why would we conduct our own research when there's certainly volumes of, of research?
I couldn't even imagine how you would even begin to measure something like that, to be honest with you.
Right, right.
Which begs the question of why it's in the regulations the way it is, but-
I don't know, you know, it's interesting that it, it showed up as early as the seventies and we're looking at the obesity problem we have today and maybe the obesity problem today might be a little lessened if the school districts had been able to come into compliance and, I don't know, that, that's a speculation, but, you know, come on, somebody a long time ago thought it was a good idea that we really, and physical education is, is so different today from when we went to gym class and I, and I, I really think you can't call it gym class, it really is physical education and-
I have very fond memories of gym class.
Yeah, I love gym class. I like, I like the old style, I like the new style.
Well, back in the forties, it was really nice.
I actually went out to, this is, I mean, I'm a big proponent, I actually went out to Naperville where that film supersized me and met, you know, the guy who was the head of that whole thing and they had volumes, you know, they did a lot of research because they had, you know, the whole program together, the, the school cafeteria program and the PE and, uh, their, their physical education program was incredible and they did, they aligned it with their academics and they did studies pre and post of, uh, their phys ed as well as their nutritional program, but I agree, there's, the research exists, Steve, so I don't know if that's something that maybe, you know, we want to make available. Uh, I'm sure Amy has it at the touch of her fingertips, but for us to conduct our own study, I mean, it, we could, but it probably wouldn't be scientifically-
No, that's, that's a valid point.
Yeah.
There's no point in measuring it because it's in the regs. We're not gonna change the regs, as belligerent as I am about observing unfunded mandates.
I mean, the point is, is just, there's a lot of stuff for everybody in this district to do all the time and let's not add another task where it's got questionable value, that's all.
The, the interesting thing about this one, and nobody has said it so far, and I know we're all ready to go home, but what's always really, um, been troubling for me is that every single area where we are out of compliance for a nanosecond, we hear about it.
Except.
And it's tied to funding or it's tied to a school rating or it's tied to, you know, all kinds of things and for whatever reason, the state education department has determined that they are not following through on this and I think it has a lot to do with collective bargaining.
Well, I think they understand, they understand that. I mean, where are you gonna fit it in?
Right.
What are you giving up for?
Exactly, and, and how are you going to move that, you know, so, so it is interesting because I, I, you know, when you ask me if we're, if there are other areas where we're out of compliance, we know in a heartbeat when we're out of compliance, but this is one they-
Is, is there any opportunity, I mean, this may be a little farfetched, but is there any opportunity for a collaboration between physical education and, you know, be it muse, I mean, there's, I mean, you certainly, they incorporate much more, music, art, I mean, dance, anything that, that might fit, you know, that, so we're not straying totally away from, you know, from the arts, but, but bringing it in and being able to consider it to be physical education.
Right.
I mean, it's certainly, it's a life skill type of thing that, that, you know, we all strive for.
Oh, you mean like paint, paintball games? I mean, is that what it is?
No, but, but certainly-
There's that credit for the marching band.
I mean, you know, ballet.
Well, the, the interesting thing about the dance, because that is one of the standards and actually was a requirement for a while, but you would think maybe you could say, "Well, could we have that done by the music teacher movement and music and, you know, and, but the regulations say it has to be a certified physical education teacher" because I think we looked at that at one point where-
And, and I, I, I understand that. I guess my point is that you're getting a dual value out of it.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, you know, it's not playing basketball, it's good for everybody to learn how to play basketball, but I think it's also, you know, good for everyone to have an opportunity to, you know, I mean, I, I, I did square dancing, but, you know, some, some other, other dance or, you know, whether-
And, and they do dance in our PE classes, um, hold dance units, but, um, if it's done by a, a person who's not a physical education teacher, then it doesn't move us further into compliance according to the regs.
Could we ask our music teachers to get a phys ed certification?
Dual certification, there we go.
And then work on strengthening abdominal control and arm control for instruments that are played? Maybe not.
Certification, I think.
We've thought of a lot of things.
Could you have co-teaching?
Expensive, uh, volunteer.
Could you have co-teaching with a PE teacher and a, and a music teacher?
Marching band.
The marching band, yeah.
So what if we took our, asked our phys ed teachers to, uh, do recess for us and we could consider that as part of the, alright. Every little bit helps.
All tongue in cheek, of course, we just, this is how hard it is, that's not the point.
Exactly.
I call the question.
Free play, equally.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on. All right, I think there are no other matters deemed necessary by the board at this time.
I would like to just bring up one question, sorry.
Maybe there are.
I'll make it quick. Um, I have recently learned about a program that, I believe they call it PTEC.
Yes.
And it's a six-year program being done by Ulster BOCs where the students come out at the end of the six years, it's, so it's a four years of their typical high school career plus an additional two that then earns them an associate's degree as well as their high school diploma with some very career-specific skill sets. Are we participating in that in any way? I understand that there are school districts in Dutchess County that are sending students, um, if, I think in this first year was the first year, I, I think this year that we're just finishing up was the first year, I think they had seventeen students in the program, I understand, and-
Yeah, I don't know which schools in Dutchess County are participating, I, I think it's the northern schools.
Yeah, I think Rhinebeck, uh, had, had a student.
There was a logistical, you know, getting the students over there. I will say that when the first round of applications came out, I pushed really hard for our BOCs to, um, fill out the application myself, there was at least one other school district, I thought with IBM right in our backyard, um, it has to be a collaboration process and I got absolutely nowhere. Um, the PTEC grant just came out this week, um, so it's a refunding of the existing PTEC grants and, um, and an opportunity for, um, rea, for new applicants. Within a few minutes of receiving the notification that the grant was open, I also received an email from Sheila Appel from IBM, who she's their community education liaison, everybody kind of knows who Sheila is, and so she, yeah.
Yeah, Hyde Park resident.
Yup. So she sent the email saying, "Oh, by the way, the PTEC grant is here," so I immediately emailed her back. I said, "Does that mean IBM will be at, one of our partners?" Because I will be at the table to help write the grant. Um, but it's big, you need, you need pretty much your BOCs to be on board, you need a major corporation, you need a couple of school districts, so I was very disappointed that our BOCs did not move forward on the last round. Um, now we're in transition and the-
Poughkeepsie's doing it with Dutchess Community College and Central Hudson, so-
Oh, they are? Can we join them?
Um, it's probably, I don't know how that works, they're already, this was back in November this was decided, but-
Oh, so that was, they must, that was the old grant.
Yeah, probably the old one, yup.
So the new grant is out and, you know, I-
Bring it up with the new superintendent.
Yeah, he's, uh, he's not starting till the end of the summer and the grants do, like, in three weeks, probably.
I mean, for future, in the future, maybe a new, new leadership will open that.
But I, I can put out a few feelers, but honestly, I was, I, I really was very emphatic that if Sheila sent me that email, did, that, that to me means IBM wants to be a partner and I'm, I'm all for that. So I will say.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Anything, I mean, let us know if there's something we can do.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's something we need to be pushing on.
Okay, so moving on to board subcommittee reports, do we have any?
Yeah, the special ed subcommittee had our last meeting pa, this past Tuesday, uh, with Aviva, we reviewed the things that are coming up and things that are in process right now and, um, one of the figures we went over is the number of students coming back into the district from, uh, out of district placements, uh, again, a significant number coming back and it was interesting, uh, Aviva went over the process we go through to identify these students and bring it back and, uh, I'd almost suggested it might be something worthwhile for Aviva to present in September, October, as we discuss the organization, once you know where it's going and manpower and stuff like that, but that of itself, uh, was very enlightening to me in terms of the, the rigidness of, of what we do before we identify students that we, that we're bringing back into the district. And it explains to me why it's been so much more successful than the original attempts when I was on the, on a special ed committee and we tried those and how they fell apart within three years.
Uh, I can report that, uh, last Thursday evening, the Dutchess County School Board Association had their annual dinner, um, Jeff was in attendance with me, um, we had a speaker, Assemblyman DeeDee Barrett was there, speaking about all the fun things going on in Albany, uh, as well as a gentleman, I can't remember his name, from, um, uh, New York State School Board Association and he happens-
He was their IT specialist.
Yeah, their IT, very interested in, um, board docs, that's part of his world, James, that's it. Um, good meeting, I felt, you know, fairly well-attended, uh, some good conversation, had, uh, some, some good opportunity, uh, DeeDee was, uh, you know, very open to, to discussion.
So Jeff's ready to do, pick up the mantle?
That could be, yeah, I think, I, I saw a gleam in his eye that he really got the-
Did you? Okay, that's what I thought, I thought that, you know.
Yeah, and, uh-
Food always does that for people.
Yeah, food isn't always there, by the way. Um, and then, Tuesday, this past Tuesday, we had an energy committee meeting of which, um, I think we reviewed some of the information from our energy-
Energy costs for the third quarter of the year, as well as the, they're developing the, for September, the end of the year, cost summary for us, for the board, actually.
Yeah.
And then we talked about the winter break possibility, the shut-in buildings down certain periods of time.
That'd be really nice.
I think, you get it?
It's a lot of information there, I mean, it's a lot, a lot available and, um, look forward to seeing it coming in.
Okay. Well, it's, wasn't a subcommittee meeting, we did have a meeting about the possible reconfiguration of this boardroom. Uh, Elliot and Steve and I, and, I don't know, you want to give the details or?
I thought we already covered this.
We covered this, that we were gonna take that out?
Yeah.
Ah, well.
And we also had our first strategic planning committee meeting.
Oh, that's right.
I've lost track of when it was, but it was-
Monday.
Monday?
Monday night.
Monday, Monday night, okay. Um, so good cross-section of people, well-attended, uh, and, um, you know, I thought, well-laid out as to what the expectations are and where we're going to from here and, uh, look forward to seeing how that works out.
Great. Okay, um, it brings us to upcoming meetings. And the next meeting is the, it would be two weeks, the twenty-fifth, is the twenty-fifth here in the district office at seven o'clock. There's no need for an executive session, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody who came.